Thank you very much and welcome to the July 2nd, 2024 Angels Camp City Council meeting. Ruth, could you take a roll call?
Mayor Hernan. Vice Mayor Moncada. Councilmember Rolio. Councilmember Sementes. Councilmember Chirado. Staff is present.
Thank you. We're gonna do the.
I believe that the United States of America and the public are wishers of justice. One nation, one home, equal rights, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to item four. This is our public comments section. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on this agenda. As we've been the jurisdiction of the state, no action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda, and speakers will be limited to five minutes per person. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak in public comment? So will you have a piece of paper there for Ruth? Just make sure we have your contact information. Make sure we have your contact information there so that we can read back out to you after tonight.
They were ready when you are. I'm ready. Hi. My name is Mary Kelly. I am an ex-employee. I am actually not ex-employee. I'm a retired employee from the city of Angels. And I am here because I heard a little rumor about frog plaques. And I sort of thought I would bring it to the council before I took it to the new administrator. Is I am also a member of the Frog Jump Committee. And we are the ones that sort of spearhead the frog plaques. Actually, the city does that. Our concern is that I know in 2020 during COVID, there was no frog jumps, so there was no plaque. Not quite sure about '21. I can't remember that far back. '22, '23. There, I haven't seen any plaques. And someone, and it could be a rumor, came up and told me that they know you guys no longer have the mold for the plaque. The Frog Jump Committee asked me to come forward and ask what's going on with the plaques, if they are still gonna move forward. I actually looked online through the budget to see when they were budgeted. And the last time I saw them budgeted was '17, '18, which by the way, was the last year I looked there. So I'm just not quite sure what's going on. If somebody could either direct me or help me with that because... Does anybody have an answer?
So what we're gonna have you do is get with staff and you can.
I can help you just.
Yes. Yep. For the public, I can let you know that we were behind on three years of frog plaque. We did misplace the mold or it was misplaced. We didn't misplace it, but we got it back.
Oh, they came in today.
So they came in today. So we now have this. But I definitely want you, Mary, to meet with staff and discuss it because we are we are running out of sidewalk downtown as the other thing. So there's gonna be some decisions with the plaques that we're gonna have to make and maybe revamp or do something different or whatever. So I love that you're here speaking about it.
Okay, and the only thing, just you saying you're running out of sidewalk. I know there's a lot of grants out there to do sidewalk things. So at some point, you know, in front of the school, in front of everything, as long as there's a.
Outside of downtown.
Yeah, we don't need to be downtown. It could be just that is sort of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you got my number. Any other public comment? May I just give you a response? I don't.
Would you take the pad?
The pad.
Oh, I didn't. Yeah, that goes with it.
Yep, my name is Susan Winger. Living in Alencito and I'm a former employee. I retired in 2020. I heard recently that the city, in employee negotiations, was considering changing a health insurance plan and going with a company called OE3. And it concerned me because I have some experience with this. And I thought it would have some serious implications for me and most of the other retirees in the city. OE3's eligibility policy states that to receive retiree benefits from them, one must retire from an employer that was contributing to their fund at the time of retirement. And that would exclude all the current retirees of the city from retirement coverage under OE3. But none of us paid OE3 for any health insurance. So I reached out to helpers and I was told that independent of the city's active employees, retirees are not entitled to helper's health coverage. So if the city discontinued their contract for active employees, retirees would all be dropped from coverage. So I urged the city to discontinue these discussions about eliminating helper's health insurance and avoid what would probably become a very expensive plan for the city to meet their commitment to their retirees. And I believe that in matters that affect any of our benefits, that all retirees are entitled to receive early communications from the city to avoid confusion and misunderstanding. And then as a matter of course, it's always helpful to ask helpers for a written opinion when you wanna make change like this because they will do that. And in less than five minutes, I knew from helpers that we would be dropped if you guys changed health.
Thank you for that.
I'm a little concerned hearing about this too. Is there some way that we can know what the city is? I mean, I know the negotiations, how it works. No one knows anything. So but really, we just don't wanna be left in the dark. I certainly stand by, if this is a true thing, stand by Susan because I am a retired in helpers. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing then?
Go ahead.
Oh. Cory, did you have anything you wanted to say in public comment? You can raise your hand if you want. We'll call on you. Nope. So item five is approval of the agenda as posted or amended. Does anybody have any reason to amend the agenda as? Any members of the public? Seeing then, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
So listen. I'll say.
Sementes?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Chirado?
Aye, thank you.
Okay, next is our consent agenda. We have four items on consent. Anybody have any reason to pull any of these?
I did.
Hey Cory?
That's okay. There was a council member left off of an approval or a consent or a motion.
What item?
Item F on on June 18th. Minutes, so the June 18th.
So you're pulling B?
Yep.
Any other items? Any members of the public? Seeing then, I'm looking for a motion for A, C, and D.
So move.
I'll second.
And a second, Ruth? Sementes?
Aye.
Rolio?
Aye.
Moncada?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Chirado?
Aye.
Okay, now we may be bringing back item B. Caroline, you can speak to this.
On item F, it says the action motion to approve resolution by Vice Mayor Moncada, seconded by council member blank, passed. So that just needs to amend.
Okay. Okay, so what we'll do is continue that item for a future, for a future meeting. And that completes our consent agenda. Item seven is our regular agenda. We're gonna start with A. This is consideration and approval of an employee agreement with Steve Williams, interim city administrator.
So as you know, after conducting interviews, council determined that based on his experience, skills, and management philosophies, and sort of overall good diagnosis. Steve Williams was best suited to serve the city as the interim city manager while we were proof for someone to fill that position permanently. So direction was given to offer Mr. Williams the position. He has accepted pursuant to the terms that council had set. And they are embodied in the employment agreement here. And so by approving an employment agreement, you will be appointing Mr. Williams into the position of city administrator.
Anybody have any questions or comments? So I am. See you when I come up to the podium. You haven't seen that. Great. Any members of the public having questions or comments? Seeing then, bringing it back to council. We're looking for an approval. Did you want to do that?
Mayor, I appreciate it. And council members, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity. And community of Angels Camp, thank you very much. I am very much looking forward to the opportunity. I've had a chance to meet with a couple of staff members. I've been very impressed. Looking forward to getting started tomorrow morning, bright and early. And do my very best to help as much as I can. My wife and children wanted to be here tonight, but there's a little sickness going through the house, so they chose to stay home instead of coming here tonight. But I do wanna thank you for trusting me to lead, guide, and support the city and the staff in accomplishing the vision of the city council. I look forward to and commit to doing my very best for the city council and the community of Angels.
Public comment. Cory, go ahead.
Yeah, it was fun to get a picture. I mean, I'm used to actually seeing these guys. I'm seeing myself here and I would love to see like the room. Usually my sense of meaning, though, of the world, I'm not able to. To be all you guys, I would have taken a three surprise and it'd be great. Have a picture of Mr. Williams from the paper. That if there's one that maybe.
Maybe we can do one. I don't know if you'll be able to.
And that's, that's, I have a picture for you before Sunday, maybe we can. Yeah.
Any other public comment? Okay.
She can check YouTube back there or report.
We can. Yeah, we can get, we can. Okay, so I'm looking for approval of the employment agreement.
I'm looking to approve the employment agreement with Steve for interim administration.
I'll second. Sementes? Rolio? Moncada? Herman? Chirado?
Aye.
Please.
Congratulations.
I trust you all, but I'm gonna take my wallet and come.
Have a fun weekend. Do you have?
Are you ready?
Any questions? Just follow. We'll be done. We're gonna move on to item B, and this is a CDB presentation. Mr. Martin Hevery.
Thank you, Mayor, honorable chair members. Martin Hevery with CDB and Film Commission and Angels Camp Museum. Now I will be giving a report on CDB, though, makes the museum in there as well. So make sure that you're all aware, thank you, that we do supply the city with monthly financial marketing reports and board minutes every month. So those are always available, but please always contact me if you have any questions. I'm here to present the CDB's marketing highlights for the 2324 fiscal year, showcasing the CDB's innovative strategy, exciting innovations aimed at promoting tourism, and showcasing unique offerings of the city of Angels and Calaveras County. I'd like to start with the global visitor spending. Visit California and Dean Runyon Associates do a record every year of each county and the tourist spending. And they released the figures for 2023, and Calaveras County visitors brought in $269 million last year, which is up 23 million over 2022, and it's actually up over 53 million from 2021. The transient occupancy tax that the county projected was 2.45 million, and we're up above that. And I talked to Michelle today regarding the city TOT, and I know that it projected 120, and hopefully we're looking at above 150. So TOT is doing very well. That's transient occupancy tax. Somebody called it top tax the other day. I thought, that's great. We can use it for the house, make sure the kids are in a great society here. The CDB surpassed our goal of seeing 14,000 people face to face the past year. That's both in Angels Camp and in Murphy's. That's a lot of people coming through the door here in Angels. The CDB maintains affiliations with key organizations like the Gold Country Visitors Association, the High Sierra Visitor Council, Visit California, and One West. These affiliations enable the CDB to network within the tourism industry, providing tips on industry's latest innovations and trends. The CDB participated in the Visit California Outlook Forum, which focused on the development importance of AI in the travel agency. This is huge. This is gonna be something that's gonna be a game changer in the travel industry. People are just gonna talk to their phone and say, hey, I wanna stay in Angels Camp for two days, and I want a hotel with fluffy pillows, and it will spit out. So it's really important that we spend time to be able to make sure that we load all of our information correctly. Is that our time?
No, you're good.
I'm done.
That was my.
So I mean, it's gonna be very competitive in this industry, and I know that everybody along the Gold Country Visitors Association, which is essentially everybody from Sierra to out of Madera County, going down Highway 49 corridor, we all work together. Our collaboration with Placer AI, a data tracking platform, which I know the city has been using, in a partnership with KCRAT Television, allowed the CDB to leverage marketing insights to reach wider audiences while continuing to reach our repeat visitors. I actually did pull out the quick report from Placer AI before I came over. And this past year, what I found really interesting was Angels Camp, when you go on Placer, when you ask information about a city, it'll automatically pick another one and put you up against it. And I thought, well, it's Incline Village, and thought about it. I thought, well, let's see. So last year, we had 416,000, 416,500 visitors, and Incline Village had 889. And the reason why I find that interesting is we had honestly 3 million visits and they had 4 million visits. So that means that we had a 7.3 return rate on visitors coming back into Angels Camp, where they only had 4.51, which means that we had a lot of return visitors. The thing that I would like to change is that the return, the visitors on average spend two hours in Angels Camp and where they spend at least four hours in Incline Village. And that's what I'd love to see. Let's do it is keeping people in town. We consistently welcome travel influencers and writers facilitating familiarization trips with international and national journalists. The CDB hosted a group of 26 travel writers in May, representing countries such as the United Kingdom, Italy, France, Australia, Switzerland, and India. Additionally, we just recently hosted one in Salt Lake City and Los Angeles. I have a really fun group coming this month, in two weeks, that are, they're called Honey, it's like Honeydew or something like that. In any case, they're a married couple that on their honeymoon decided that they were gonna become influencers. And for 10 years, they've been traveling. They don't live anywhere. They're just on this honeymoon for over 10 years. So they're coming to Calaveras, and we'll have them here. That's actually a really great link about where we're located too, because anybody that comes into the county, you haven't stopped at the museum first. So the CDB, we give them, we have a lot until we can give them a welcome package, and then we've got it for two hours. These partnerships with travel journalists play a crucial role in raising awareness about Calaveras County as a unique destination. Their promotion extends beyond their immediate followers, reaching new potential visitors, and significantly contributing to our marketing efforts. The CDB's marketing endeavors for 2023 and 24 fiscal year underscores the CDB's strategic approach to showcasing Calaveras County and the city of Angels as the premier tourist destination. The CDB supports local events and initiatives to reinvesting local tax dollars back into the community, fostering tourism and economic growth. We really wanna put it out there that we're here to support local events, to help people market those events. I plead, if you have any events or things that you think that visitors might be interested in, contact us so that we can get it on the calendar. The CDB took an active role in attending various county events. I could run down the whole list of events that you know we do. The CDB shares weekly blogs on the website focusing on various districts within Calaveras County, showcasing the county's diverse offering, ultimately District 4. Angels Camp, Copper Rock, just about the most, but 2030 logs is half of it. Our Back to Nature 2024 calendar continues to be a hit, serving as an effective tool to spotlight local events and promote them a set date within Calaveras County. Post-COVID, what we found is people just canceled things left, right, and center. So we're trying to get that calendar, getting people to commit to those so that we know what we can plan on marketing dollars appropriately. We generated 28 travel articles in popular publications as passenger, in addition to the standard advertising with Yosemite Journal, NorCal, which covers 13 major Northern California newspapers, Sac Town Magazine. Funny enough, we couldn't decide whether to go with Sac Town Magazine or Sacramento Magazine, and Sacramento Magazine is no longer. So we made the right choice. We've been with Sac Town now for a couple of years. Local Getaways, the California Visitor's Guide, as well as National Geographic Travel Review. We were also in the, I got a spot in the USA Today Travel West brochure. The CDB utilizes social media platforms like Facebook and Instagram, and we have 56,000 followers on Facebook and 8,000 followers on Instagram. We have just taken over our social media again. And I think we're doing a really good job in-house, and I wanna keep it in-house for the time being, so I'll let you have it. Furthermore, our online platforms, including the CDB website, social media platforms, and blogs, there's an informational hub. Here, visitors not only discover videos of our region, but also receive guidance on safe outdoor exploration and respectful interaction with locals, residents, and visitors. And that's the hardest thing that I think the CDB does, is try and balance tourists versus local quality of life. The CDB has designed and distributed 60,000 Calaveras guides this year across Northern California. And funny enough, Pismo Beach is like this mega for handing out guides. I don't know why, but we make sure that they're there because it's the number one place where people pick them up. The CDB has concerns regarding the decrease in hospitality employment and retail sales. So ultimately, what came out of that report that I talked about earlier with Dean Runyon and Visit California is that hospitality workers in Calaveras County are down 8%. And I really wanna say thank you to Habitat, since I do think that will make a huge difference. Our workforce has no place really to live, and we're working with Habitat to do whatever we can to make that happen because ultimately, we have a lot of people, especially not the hill, that live in their cars, et cetera. These issues are not unique to Calaveras County, but the CDB has dedicated funding solutions. And again, when we talk about retail sales, I don't know, I don't know, you know, what more we can do, and I'm always looking for ideas. We're investigating ways to get people to shop more, but people just aren't buying more. And it's not just here in Calaveras. It's throughout the state and the nation at the moment, so. The CDB continued its successful partnership with the city of Angels, running the Angels Camp Museum, and the partnership allows the CDB to facilitate personalized visitor experiences throughout the county. CDB is excited to be able to launch new exhibits for our visitors, with one particular highlight being the Albert Michelson exhibit. So I'm gonna run the museum for a second. Albert Michelson exhibit has done incredibly well. We've had hundreds of kids through the exhibit already. Just so you know, we used to, the museum used to charge local children. We do not charge local school groups to go to the museum. And we have literally had hundreds of kids. It's been a resounding success. And ultimately, the partnership with the city is so important to us because ultimately, we get our visitors, like I was saying, for a couple of hours. They're with us, and we talk to them, whereas before, when we were located downtown, somebody would come in and ask a question, and then somebody would be standing just behind them, and they'd feel obligated to move on. And so having a museum really allows us to educate our visitors. And talking about success, we put in 65,000. We thought we would make 65,000 admissions, and we're up over 75. So we've done well. That money all goes back to the museum. This last year, we did the Albert Michelson exhibit, but we also redid the flooring and painted the room down underneath the museum. We've improved the Frog Jump exhibit with a selfie station. We replaced a lot of, actually, Signal Service got tired because they had to look on eBay for parts for the fire alarm, so we finally updated the fire alarm system that SUNI service. Our next project, we're gonna finish the Foundry exhibit. Thanks to the foundation, they got a $10,000 grant we'd match. And we'll be moving. I think Brad Sutton is helping me move that, the very, very important part of the Foundry. It's unique in Foundry history, the electric furnace. And it used to sort of be out in no man's land, and Brad brought it around the other day, and you couldn't actually get it behind the pole barn where we wanted to sit, so it'll be a part of the whole Foundry exhibit. But Brad has come by, and I'm working with Amy on potentially moving that house. I know I was very excited about doing that years ago, and ultimately, I think it would be a boon for the museum to have it. Ultimately, since that huge oak tree came down, it was in between the buildings, it's an ice for now. And to be able to place that house with a couple of cypress or something on either side and have the ability to walk around it, look in the windows. So the idea would be that it would be a display piece. You wouldn't actually have people walking into it, but you'd go and look in the windows like Boney. You'd see each of the rooms dressed like it was eighteen years. So if that's possible, that would be great. And there's earth to be moved and things that happens. A couple of fences have to come out to be able to move it. But I would love just to put that in your ear, if possible, I would love to be able to do it. And I think it would be, comes sort of the jewel of the museum. That's the wardhouse we're talking about. And right now, I'm also working on improving our cameras. We can see planets millions of miles away. I can't see so many 15 feet from the cameras, so we're gonna update those. Farmer's Market has been a boon. I would love to talk to the city council also about the baskets and MACT. The baskets from the old timers museum that were, that we had at our Goren Museum had gone to MACT. I gave the Seaman O Baskets to MACT, and I wanted to sort of put it in the council there, whether you would like the remaining baskets to go to, to go to MACT as well, or whether you'd like to hang on to those. We do have them displayed, so if you wanna come down and look, you're welcome, obviously. Mark Twain. Amy tells me Mark Twain's gonna start being worked on on Monday, so that's very exciting. He lives in the carriage house at the moment. Brad did a great job of putting him on a steel base with really thick wheels so he can roll in and out so that they can work on it, and then we can push him back in for safety. And actually, Frog Hop of Fame. Why don't we go all the way to the museum and frog? I don't know if we can do that, but that is sort of a great thing, I would think, to be able to extend it. I think that's really kind of everything that I wanted to talk about, unless you had any questions. You've been provided with a budget. It's pretty much a hard copy of the budget that we did last year. Again, we're just asking for the same amount of money. We do get $88,000 from the city, and 15 of that is just for the museum. I'd like to see that 15 go to signage in the park. I know we talked about that a while ago. Thank you. The interpretive.
An additional 15 or the?
That 15. Yeah, the original deal was that that gets to be spent on marketing, but I mean, as far as I'm concerned, that is marketing for us. And I think having us in Angels Camp makes so much of the difference. And it.
So some of, on the trail, some of the QR codes could direct people over to the, is that what you're thinking, Amy? Is direct them to the museum?
Interpretive and, so it's sort of symbiotic kind of thing.
You're in the interpretive history. Yeah, that's a great.
The Foundry or whatever.
Yeah, so the Foundry exhibit, and then ultimately, if we can do the house, that would be great too. But we're running out of space. We haven't gotten, I mean, we've got people that keep wanting to dummy the stuff to us. And it's like, if it's pre. But we're running out of space. We haven't gotten, I mean, we've got people that keep wanting to dummy the stuff to us and it's like, if it's pre-war, we'll take it, we'll figure it out. I will always take it. And if we have to, you know, get it to another museum or what have you, we'll make sure that it stays.
What was the holdup on the house? It's free? It's the charter?
It's, well, so we did this investigation five years, four, four, over four years ago. And it was this group out of Scott movers and they wanted to chart fifteen thousand dollars because they had a big move that they were doing. So they had to piggyback it and move it because we're, uh, you know, we would do it because they wanted to do it for as sort of a gift. That was their call. Since COVID and their cost, I mean, he came out and the bid went way up. So I know Amy's investigating other options. But yeah, that would be the biggest dummy log.
Whatever Brad Sutton can do it.
Well, I talked to them about it. I, the, the, the problem is we might have to take the roof off.
Right.
Uh, house of the wires, but it, actually the guy that just came out and said, actually, if they can just get two hoists and lift the, the wires, we might be able to skip right underneath it. Because he doesn't have to lift it that far off the ground. And Mike, listen, right? I, I do have to go, I've got a, or how do you think, um, to talk about the cooling center?
Please.
So I was approached, who was it? Um, originally Jen, yes. And then I've had like ninety other calls regarding the cooling center. And they wanted to do it at, or I was told in the library. And then I wanted to be able to help with that and have one of our employees go and monitor it. But then they're going to be closed on, on, uh, fourth of July and this weekend and we're open. So could we just do the cooling center at the Carriage House? Cause then we're there from nine thirty to four thirty, we're monitoring it. Um, people would have something to look at when they came to sit there. Um, and it just seems like it's a, it would be a win-win.
Is, is there a way that we could extend the hours to eight, Martin, and maybe?
Of course, of course. And then we could figure out.
And then work with Steve to?
Yeah. Yeah, we definitely could. I mean, I, I think everybody's on board at the, at the museum and the CDB. And that's another thing I'd like to point out is the CDB employees are, were never paid more to work for the museum. They all volunteer, we all volunteer our time to, to make the museum work. And we do have two, uh, part-time museum employees, which are on the mission space.
Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you for your report.
It's actually a lot more nervous sitting here than.
So my only concern with moving the, the cooling station at this time is that we've already done outreach and we're aligning with the county on the press releases and stuff to have it out though. So maybe a secondary one? I don't know.
I talked to Eric and he, so as far as tomorrow goes, we're keeping it at the library, he said.
Okay.
But he, he would get back to me later today to see whether potentially we could just say from Thursday on, because I don't think this is going away this weekend. I think it's very wild, like, so. Yeah.
I've already notified P G N of the location. There's, anyway, some, some.
Some logistics.
They have to work out because if there's.
I mean, if you want us to go to the library, we'll be more than happy to do that.
Well, I do think that we need to talk about extending it, there's the likelihood that if we extend it and then the hours and things like that, so I definitely want to, uh.
So, so, so Tori, did you help us with that? With, with the radio station? Or should we call, should we, should we call?
But we have, so we have, we have.
We did, we did all the radio station, right?
So Mike, we have, we have to reach out to her.
Okay, okay.
Volunteer their headquarters. So yeah, so I think we are setting the work ethic.
Well, we're here, whatever you need, we're gonna help.
I think the library isn't tomorrow. She's. And it's supposed to be at the.
No, that's the library is.
No, I was just there today and go, I think, but I found the clock.
So we're gonna have to figure out a way to stop it.
And I'm like, I'm just waiting for hours.
No, it is open tomorrow after.
She said no. She said it's supposed to transfer to the museum tomorrow because she was telling me where to go.
Okay, well, I can tell you that maybe there's conversation about, but it is not supposed to be that way. So we're gonna.
Get a solution.
So I need.
We got your name and then we'll give you.
So maybe give you some names and.
He wants to be there, can do some names, so you're good, I know. It's ridiculous. I'm sorry and I'm sorry for the outburst, but I'm the one that's dealing with a hundred and eight. And my home is over eighty-eight.
We understand, we understand. So I was definitely on the phone today with Health Human Services. They are doing what they can to continue to offer us some staffing. There's a lot of logistics that we're working out. I've been on campus calls and I want to remain with the library for tomorrow. We need to staff it. We need to reach out. And we need to find, uh, I don't think we, if we have to pay overtime, I think we have to, we have to do what we can. Health Human has, uh, seven other locations, the county?
It's Dallas, Ring, Boca, uh, Copper.
They did Murphy's, Copper Rock and.
No, no Murphy's, there's nothing up the road. That's why, no, that's why I was saying.
So their frustration is that that's where their staffing is going. So they couldn't really offer us staffing, but I think we can make some phone calls. We need to do that, so.
Top of the Calaveras transit that is transporting people as well.
Correct, yes, so.
We filed a.
Correct, but we're gonna work on that and it will be open tomorrow. Thank you.
Yeah, for running, you said. I do actually.
No, no. Always asking a little question. You sort of touched on it, but can you just elaborate a little bit further on the affiliation with P C R A?
So P C R A, what we did was they, they, I never can usually afford it. Um, I did have a little extra money for the courses. Um, and ultimately they do these buyout days where you're actually on a P C R A, um, web page, you're on their homepage. So you get time on their homepage, but then you're always in a scroll what to do. So it worked really well. What I did with P C R A was I took the five top zip codes that visit us, not, um, outside of the, the Two Sister County area. And I was able to market just to those people to remind them of the Frog Hop, to remind them of, um, the spring wine weekend. Um, we also did the, um, Celtic Jigs. Um, it was one other I miss coming out of my head, but it was a great way of marketing and I think that we saw the success in that. So P C R A said that there were forty-five thousand visitors.
How are your bags distributed? You mentioned Carmel, but I mean.
So there's a, there's a, there's a company called Certified and they, we pay them to, I say we pay them. So every, every person that's in the guide pays for the, uh, the development and the distribution of that guide. So Certified gets half of the guides that we, we order. And then they, uh, Keith, who's our guy, you know, when you walk in, you see those card racks?
Yeah.
He's the one that drives around Northern California, maintaining them. He's a great person to talk to because he's the one who gives the information on where the guys go amongst. So that's, that's how they go. We also put a QR code on our, uh, on the cover this year, which was a great idea because if you're at the airport and you don't want to take a bunch of stuff with you, you can just download it on your home. Super, thank you all very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks. I had to thank you, by the way, too.
What's that?
Nothing, yeah, but I was certain personally.
Any other public comments on Martin's presentation? We're gonna move on now to item C. This is the Rural Recreation and Tourism Program at Park Lightner Mine.
Uh, Mayor, council members, your most recent update is tomorrow's sort of a big day. There'll be lots and lots of concrete being moved in to plug the vertical. Two of the vertical holes coming out in the expansion area, um, as well as putting in the curving for the playground. Once that's done, spec moves in and constructs a playground. So we're looking forward to that. The week of the eighth, starting on Monday, Mark Twain will start having his restoration. And we released today a QR code that will go out to the museum. It's also been posted, um, to the two hundred and two people who are now signed up for our newsletter. I have copies here. Basically it's a map with three locations and you can say where your preference is for Mark Twain to go once he is all restored. The bathrooms will be moving in shortly after that. And tonight we will be talking about, um, some additional remediation for the geotechnical issues. Um, we did contact the residents about the fact there's going to be a lot of concrete, uh, trucks coming in tomorrow and did touch base with them. Evidently people keep visiting the park and keep wanting to use the bathrooms. So we are looking at putting up a sign that basically says bathrooms closed, residents construction only.
Um, isn't it fenced off?
It's fenced off. You would think that would discourage them, but evidently not sufficiently.
So a sign on the fence that says do not enter its construction zone or?
Um, or even at the top so they don't even bother and go down because turning around, it there gets.
Yeah, there's no room.
Bunch of people down there, it gets a little tight and people are just so used to going down there. They just, it doesn't register that there's fencing and they can just automatically use those bathrooms, so, um.
Maybe the safety concern is the main thing is.
And it's, yeah, and it, it also makes it a little more difficult for the residents also to, to move in and out. So, um, there's, there's basically that. So lot going on. We did release a, another newsletter with updates also and it's been now in the middle of the month. Um, lots of, uh, changes going on, especially at the playground. You don't see grading every single day. Um, what they have to do on the plugging, it's a little strange. You grade one day and then you have to go in and survey the actual location, um, for, in order to close a mine shaft. It's not just so a bunch of stuff in the ground. You have to actually have a, to a technical engineer inspect every layer you put in and make sure that soils engineer properly to put in, to make the concrete mixes exactly right before you put it in. And so those things, sometimes you'll see pauses and that's what's going on when those occur. And also heard about, uh, pickleball courts, yes. Um, the multi-surface hard court in the park will be lined to accommodate pickleball courts. They won't be separate. It'll be all that one big hardcore and then we're going to try and squeeze three in there. Um, because one standard full-size basketball court should accommodate that. Be happy to answer any questions.
No, Amy, I appreciated the outreach, um, and, and you said it was posted to the website and you and Caitlin did an excellent job writing that update for the park.
Great, thank you very much.
I think that's important so the community knows, you know, that we are making progress, even though you may not see him out there every day.
Who knows on social media?
Well, good, okay. Hopefully he'll get rid.
Yeah, thank you for the updates. I got the email, uh, all that and then I also did the survey today, so.
Okay.
Good job, progress.
Cool.
Have a comment on the park?
Hi guys, you all know me. My name is Mike Fish anyways, but I gotta check questions. You guys are talking about plugging the, the mines out, correct?
Not on this item, that's the next agenda here.
Okay, but she says they're already plugging them. Am I correct?
On the ones that are.
The ones that are on the plan that were already determined to, to be updated. The next item is the additional plugs. Am I right, Amy?
Yes, there are four locations, but I don't know if you want to wait till the next presentation.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect, well, we'll get some more information on this one coming. Any other public comment on this item? Anybody online? Okay, seeing that, we'll move on to item D, which is description and direction on fencing versus capping of the shafts for Utica Park and Lightner Mine.
Mayor and council members, I'm going to have the city clerk go ahead and move up to the first graphic on this one. This one, uh, one more, this one. There you go. Okay, um, Ashley, go down one more. So basically, over since November, we've been coming to you and asking you for funding for GeoCon to do geotechnical testing. And they've done excavations on this site and they've made recommendations to us for this expansion area that is on the side of what used to be a mine. And asked them where it might be dangerous or not dangerous. Um, and they basically determined that the new Lightner Mine, which is the one that has been fenced forever up right by the highway, should continue to be fenced. That is their recommendation.
Which, which one is this number?
It's the one to your right at the top. There you go.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Yeah. And then the two arrows off to the left, those were relatively small, like air shafts and such that came up. Um, and it was less expensive to plug those than to fence them. And we could have delayed the project and waited until we came to council that because it would delay the project, we told them to proceed with capping those. And they are in fact capping those first thing in the morning. And a cap is basically a little V-shaped little, plug the top of it, the sort of a V-shaped cap. Why we made that decision was when you're walking along, there's quite a precipitous drop when you're walking along a flat area and somebody definitely fall in there. If you fenced it, it would make it very attractive for somebody to try to crawl into there and call attention to it. So that would happen on that. The big one is number three. Um, that is the old Lightner. And they basically went out there, they dug and dug and dug and never got to daylight. Um, there's all sorts of stuff underneath there. And basically what the geotechnical people do based upon their experience throughout the middle of the year is they said, you want to put a slab on it. And if this sounds familiar, it's because that's exactly what they did in Utica Park where the slab is. That is actually on the north end of the Utica Mine. So they are recommending, GeoCon is, that we put a slab over the top of the old Lightner Mine also. And that's what I'll be asking you to decide tonight whether to do eight thens around that or to do a slab of cement like we have in Utica Park right now.
But there's a plug under that.
No, there would not be a plug under that.
Just a.
Yeah, what they do is it's so, it's a certain size and what they do is they want you to put slab on top that's reinforced with metal. Because they're not guaranteeing that it will never crash in, but if somebody's standing on top of it and it suddenly sinks, it will sink slowly and you're not going to have people hurt. So that's the whole idea behind putting a slab there. It's the same thing with the slab that's currently in Utica Park. It does have a little bit of rebar in it, but it's very evidently small rebar and it's not very thick concrete. That's when they brought out the CPR, if I could see that out there.
Okay.
Um, and, but they did detect some metal in there. They have recommended that that be read done. Um, we are not putting a structure on it. It's been there for several decades. There's no sign that it's going to sink. And another thing to think about is all those trees that are there in the roof zone. Not sure we really want to be digging in that core area. So, um, staff's recommendation is to follow GeoCon's recommendation. Yes, I know they are expensive. We had looked at having ARPA money in order to do this and it was four hundred thousand dollars towards that. Um, this basically would bring the grand total with GeoCon's work and a hundred percent of the work recommended by GeoCon. That would be three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Um, if we took out the Utica North slab in the Utica Park, that would placement that pad, that would pull it down to two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of that four hundred thousand. So when we're ballparking, it'd be somewhere between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars, so.
Is it two hundred and thirty-eight thousand or two hundred and three thousand?
Two eighty-three, six sixty-one.
It's like two thirty-eight.
And that thirty-eight on there.
Hundred.
No, no, no. So what I'm doing is so, okay, so the grand total for GeoCon, the work is two thirty-eight, four oh two.
Right.
We have paid or will have paid GeoCon eighty-nine thousand, seven seventy-three in additional.
Okay.
Bringing the grand, grand, grand total to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five. And then if you take out that, replacing that Utica North staff there, we will have paid two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars for all remediation and all studying and all excavation and all research for geotechnical issues in the entire park.
Okay, so do we want to take these item by item, what you guys want to do as far as description of the site?
And I have the answer.
Starting off one.
Oh, or do you want me to start?
You can start.
Um, I'm kind of bummed that we got to fence the new Lightner. Um, that's kind of a new, you could have kind of fun to walk around. What?
You mean the one that we have the barbed wire fence around right now?
That's hot, on the break.
Yeah.
Um, I'm all for plugging the, the concrete in the, in the, uh, air shafts.
Okay.
I think that, that, that's fine. If that's what they're recommending, um, that I have to do the big slab. My only thing is the existing slab. I hate to bring up a whole new part and then not, you're not talking about putting it, you're not talking about tearing that old slab up, right? Just resurfacing it is what I remember because you didn't want to dig. Just resurfacing it is what I remember, cause you didn't wanna dig it up, correct?
My understanding is they would have to dig it up.
Cause I thought they were just, I thought they were just talking about like.
Facelift, yeah.
I didn't know if they were.
That facelift that we were talking about was if we left it alone, we were talking about putting like a veneer over the top so we could put brands in it. That was with the assumption that it wasn't gonna be touched or remediated, if you want to remediate it, they're gonna chunk it up.
They're chunking it up and taking it out.
Take it out.
But there's an option to not remediate. So we could not remediate if it's structurally sound and then we could facelift it to make it look better.
Yes.
So there's still, you're saying there's still a chance that.
And and you're talking forty-four or five? For the existing.
To replace it.
And to give you an idea of scope, that slab is almost exactly half the size of the slab that we go.
It's only half the size. The other one's double. Okay, and that slab, the new one that we would pour, right there by three.
Yep.
Then people could walk on it.
Yep.
They could have parties on it, you could have a dance floor on it, you could do whatever you wanted to without the concrete.
Correct.
But it's also going to have a fence?
No.
So chain link is an option.
Yeah, so, and what's funny is chain link is seventeen thousand, roughly seventeen thousand less. Or wrought iron, real pretty stuff, would be approximately seventeen thousand more, but then you'd have something fenced off in the middle.
Okay, so we've heard from Alvin.
No, I agree, I think the current slab out there in the middle of the park. I would suggest we retain it and maybe resurface it or just dress it up a little bit. Doesn't make sense to incur additional cost.
If we can.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, and they're sorry about that. Thanks, Rose.
There it is.
There's the other one.
The, um, mine shaft of pop, the Lightner Mine, that's getting a nice decorative wrought iron, it's gonna kind of.
We insisted that that be decorative wrought iron instead of chain link because it's so, so, so. So you should still be able to look into it, and yes, we will still do an interpretive sign. Technically, if somebody really wanted to, they could walk up there.
How about we hear from the public, so we know we have some interested parties here? Mike, you got that?
Yeah. Okay, so Mike, Mike, Mike. I've been down in these tunnels, I ran around in these tunnels down in our. Okay, so you're you're talking about, go back down, we can go back down to one, two and three. Okay, so number two, number one, or number two and number three. If you ever been down in those tunnels, those sets that are in there, there's plugs. Okay, so that means that tunnel will plugs farther down than the staff. So by putting the concrete cap on it. What's it gonna do? Okay, so I have been in those tunnels basically all my life, and I ran around in them, I know there's a whole bunch of things in that tunnel. All of them. Alvin, you probably, I don't know if you've been in that.
I've been in that, I've been above it, yeah.
So, putting the concrete plug on them, it's not a good ordeal to me. Second hole on the. When Amy was talking about it on the, the existing slab. That sort of came in once, long time ago, but it did came in once. Okay, have you done any geothermal or geoengineering underneath it? Geoecho sound, to see if there's this hole underneath that slab now. That's a good.
Existing one.
The exist, the one that, the one down in the middle of the park. They did it geosound.
They did a GPR.
The radar. The geosound is gonna, geoecho sound is gonna give you. Sound verification underneath the slab to see if there's an aqua hole underneath or not, so if you remove the slab, you're gonna be doing a bit of work that you don't know about. Word advice. Second of all, I wanna talk to you guys about the, uh, chain link. On the rates, the rate portal, you guys got thirty thousand dollars for a chain link fence, it's eight by ten? That's an eight by ten fence, thirty thousand dollars to erect an eight by ten fence. That's an awful lot of money. Okay, the vertical shaft portal is bigger, it's twenty by twenty-five, and it's only twenty-nine thousand, thirty thousand. There's a discrepancy in here in this, I I don't understand this. And the Lightner Mine shaft, which is sixty-three thousand, is a fifty by fifty. Now, if you took those, just out of curiosity, I mean, if you. Probably followed the material, you don't even come up close to twenty thousand dollars in material, so that leaves you over a hundred. Approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars in just in labor to build a, build the fences, that seems kinda a little excessive. I mean, I I just. Don't know if you guys knew that. You know, I mean. That's a pretty good sized chunk of money to erect a fence that's a eight by ten. You know, that's that's thirty thousand dollars and then you got a twenty by twenty-five, that's twenty-nine thousand dollar? It doesn't make sense. There's something for you guys to think about and ponder on, but I would definitely. Look into the pricing of that, but I would also definitely look into fencing that, instead of putting concrete slabs on them. Cause if it does sink, you're back into the same spot. If you could replace the fence, then it isn't put a concrete and you have everybody come back and play. Like I said, those slabs, those sets underneath that, my mine shaft, are not in good shape.
Yeah, any other public comment? Any online? Seeing then. Amy. You have issued notice of proceeds or direction to Boyer for two of items.
To to the plug, and I wanted to figure it clear, you don't have a fence after you've plugged it, you're done. It's not fence and plug, it's plug or fence, and they are looking at plugging. And none of the, um, geotechnical investigations imply that you never would have any subsidence. This is so that if they did, um. It reduced the risk of injury to people who might be walking.
So there's steel under there, there's, it's.
On the. Under the plug, it it's a very technical way that they, they compact it and build it up and try to catch the rim of it, I'm sorry to. It sounds far, but they've been excavating away in order to make it so that that cap will fit on top. And stay stable on the ground top, so that if it sunk, it would go.
Like that.
But the plug would still. But the plug can have that top, it's still, yeah, so like you might be doing this, but you're not gonna go that.
Have you seen the size of that shaft? Have you been down in that tunnel in the same size of the tunnel?
Un- understood, so I I have not, that's why we have people go out there and do excavations. And they did excavations, they also did a bunch of coring around it, but, um. One of the things that happened was I looked at the cost too and I went like, are you? Uh, what they have to do is not the material costs that's used in, is they have to do excavations for the plittings of the main supports or those fences.
But it's still putting in.
And it's those plittings that are expensive, and so I still wasn't convinced when they told me that. So I had our engineer review all of the costs, and he said, yeah, they are high, so they are reasonable.
Okay, that was gonna be my question, so Boyer is kind of the design build guy, but he has given pricing and you ran that.
I ran that higher city engineer, and I I challenged them on it twice, and.
That's the slab, the shafts and with the fencing or?
Yes, all three. They basically use pound rounds costing on this, which is, you and I would know from working with pound rounds, it'd be high. Obviously, if it comes in lower, yay.
Yeah, so is there a chance that this would come in lower? It's the tiny materials, this, how are we?
Yeah, I'm not gonna wrong that. I'm not gonna promise that, but.
How are you gonna track that, how does that, how's that working?
Is it not not to exceed?
It's a not to exceed.
But are you paying on actuals, are you paying on the actual amount of concrete that's being used and on the actuals? Or is it a lump sum of twenty-one thousand nine hundred for that item and twenty-nine thousand four hundred for the next item?
However you would like us to do the work. For transporting, generally we've been doing, um. Actually, we've been doing more or less actuals, have we not been receiving detailed, um, invoices from Michelle Sova that actually shows that they've actually. Yeah.
Quote by the amount that's been spent and we might hit something under, we might, we might come in under.
And GeoCon has always told us that they expected that it was a not to exceed and they expect. On theirs for being up there.
So Amy, what's, the liability is the same as if we fenced it or we plugged it. In terms of insurance, what's with fences, are you gonna post that, you know, do not climb or whatever so that there's? Cause I I don't want that fence to become a creative nuisance either.
In talking to public works, they did not like the idea of fences because they will have to maintain them over time. Whereas. Heaven willing and the the creek don't rise, these plugs will work and we won't have to be constantly. There's not one hundred percent guaranteeing something like this, I've shown you the maps, it's spaghetti underneath the entire.
Around the trail.
That is true, what is true of the Lightner area is true of our entire. And the level.
Working at this, so you're asking for us to direct you to item proceed? I just wanna go with the three options that you presented.
What I need to know from you is, do you want us to redo the existing slab? And do you want us to do a slab or a fence or the Lightner? Too much of it is a facelift, so if we can. We can make it look nicer without necessarily doing remediation, so I would need some direction.
Yeah, and another scary thing is bringing up that big slab, the existing slab, is you could, it's. Roots, different things that kinda scare me to, I don't know, if we can resurface or redo that slab, I'm all for that.
And Amy, you're, what you're recommending is to fence the new Lightner shaft and then plug cement the rest of them.
Do the pad on the new.
And do the pad on the new, and then.
Um, I leave it up to you on the existing one.
And then direction on the existing one.
Yeah, the plugs are already going in tomorrow.
Okay, with plugs.
We would have had to install the project.
No, I agree with the current pad and also I love the idea of incorporating all of the, um, family. Brands on that if we can still continue to do that somehow, but not have a hook. Fencing makes me nervous, just on the liability piece.
What are the other options without fencing the, the Lightner Mine? What are the other?
They they never gave us one, it was just two.
The equipment that's up there, that's what we're talking about, right?
The one next to the equipment, yeah, that's always been fenced, they didn't even attempt to tell us to account that or to do anything other than fencing. They just said, no, it would be. It would be too much, it was really moved to fence it, into your fence. I don't know if you've ever seen the wall, the retaining wall that's holding up highway, so.
Would be any way to incorporate the frog planks into this? Or in the paths, or even in the one that already exists?
I was thinking about that, like either like a wall, where you do plaques on a wall or maybe on the, on the existing.
It it's a possibility on existing, um.
Buy more, it's more real for the.
Yeah, I I know that it had been discussed, we're gonna have a fair number of sidewalks and stuff out there, so that's one option. I would probably steer away from the number three one because people may do events on there and as you know, sometimes it'll freeze over, get some buried those.
But the existing one that we're wanting to have a facelift get into it, could we incorporate?
I can ask, I can ask, I don't know the way to do this, my problem, do you? We, I I would ask the geotechnical engineer, do not claim to be.
But if the council's so decisive, do we have three plaques that need to be set? You could work with the contractor and have them set those plaques as he's pouring the concrete.
He would do that if the geotechnical engineer.
No, 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 Amy, but in your heart, I'm sorry, sidewalks. In the, in the, cause you are gonna.
As long as we can still make them AKA.
Right.
They can get a little slippery.
Yeah, and they do get a little slippery, so there's there's that issue. And they may want additional money to put those in, so.
Yeah, I don't know, we need to talk to.
Yeah.
Frog jump.
And it's something.
And I really like Martin's idea, I mean, Martin's done a really good job of revamping the, in my opinion, revamping the. The the museum and the CDB and and there's a whole new frog jumping exhibit right there too, so I don't know, I'm I'm more for that. Really miss alone.
I actually like that idea too.
So I'm hearing.
You got a good direction?
So if let's don't make a decision on the slab that's there right now, we're gonna leave that one a little loose. Um, but yes, we're gonna do the slab on number three and we're gonna fence. The the old and the new, Lightner, one will be fenced, one will be slab. And we'll sort of not worry about remediating the existing Utica Park one, probably gonna do the facelift instead. That, correct?
If feasible, and I think if they go back and say.
As to what can be done on the existing.
For the re- for re-surfacing, yeah.
If they say it's gonna be more of a pain in the butt and cost twice as much, then then we look it out, we put the new, the other, we put the new in, but.
So do a little bit of research on that?
That's just my. Does that make sense?
I I can, I don't think it will delay them, I think their main thing is to, cause they're gonna be going on operating on the far end, so. If we need to come back to the other one, yeah, I'll ask them for some additional information on that, what we can do.
And then the only thing I'm gonna say about cost is please pay on actuals and not lump sum items. These are not to exceed prices that are nice for presentation purposes, but for construction that's going on out there, please pay on actuals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on we have item E, this is, uh, the approval of resolution number twenty-four dash five six. Establishing the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five GAN appropriations limit for the City of Inglewood.
So, um. So now that we have our approved budget, uh, we went ahead and, um, put the numbers into the GAN limit. It increased our GAN limit by a hundred and fifty, almost a hundred fifty-one thousand. And so what we're asking for is a resolution to increase our GAN limit for the fiscal year. For up to, um, four million five oh six four sixty-five, which reflects. Uh, three point six five increase and you see through the first half of the personal income. And then the population, it was very small, but a very small increase, so it's basically. And you have a a chart showing the GAN limit over the year in the way. Paracol on zone, increase or decrease in the limit. Let's see if we can see it there.
We need the three different measuring times.
Measuring time has this for three years, I think it is, that you don't have to include that, so it gives you time to grow. Yeah, so if we're growing around a hundred fifty or seventy-five, we have a few years. Then we will continue to see our GAN increase, right now we have a cushion in our GAN limit of about four hundred fifty thousand. So that's a very projected for this year coming around four thirteen, um, so it really hits, of course, to the GAN.
And so, and if we reach the ceiling, then we'd have to take it to the voters to extend it, correct?
Right.
Is that at a general election or would that be a special election, how would that work, Michelle?
General rule about that, we would have to find out, but.
She knew, I do know, no, it's okay, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but, but, yeah, cause I I know that the. And we talked a lot was they, with their fire department.
Well, you want to do one as well.
Yeah.
It was a special.
Yeah.
I don't believe it was a special, but.
Yeah, we think it is the timing. Yeah, we would wanna probably for the special. Yeah, we would wanna probably for the special, there could be some stops. You know, it could be something.
Because I think we need to explain to the public. We don't have a, we don't have a vehicle to collect that additional. If we, if we hit our GAN limit, we don't, we, and we can't increase our GAN limit, then those dollars. Can't stand the dollars. So.
And if you get pushed into a special election, it can be.
Sure.
Ten thousand dollars.
It may, it might take whatever, a year or two.
So this is something that we're considering for twenty-four, twenty-five, but then we're gonna have to continue to.
To monitor.
Every year.
Yeah, and every year we do bring it to council.
We just haven't had to raise it before.
Right, we've never had a special election that I'm aware of to increase. We've always been under it and have a bit of a cushion, so. With measure A in, you know, four years from now, when we have to add that into our GAN limit, it's gonna be closer. If you, if you increase your GAN limit another three, four hundred thousand, we might be okay depending on.
Right.
Measure A a full year would could be around five hundred or fifty thousand.
Okay, we have any public comment on this end? Any public comment on Lang? Okay, seeing then, bringing it back, consideration of approval of resolution twenty-four dash five six.
I'll second.
Hi.
And so, Nancy.
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, the next item is, if it's a code compliance update, it says Caitlin, but we don't.
Well, no, but, um, Michelle.
Michelle.
So, um, Caitlin was given the task now that we have data from I-Works, um, and they've been, uh, code compliance officers have been updating the data. She went back, there was a report, I believe, that was given to you, was it through December? I believe it was through December. Some of the data numbers were from actual, from the system, so she was able to go in there, pull the report and re. Prepare the numbers based on actual cases. It through, through May from the data that we currently have, so. This is, um, this, this chart here breaks down, um, didn't get a chance to ask Caitlin, but I know there was a question regarding if these cases are closed.
I do not know.
So we'd have to follow up with her, maybe add that to the report.
We, we followed up just before we.
Okay, sure, but it was closed?
Um, we have twenty-two active code compliance and twenty-two vegetation right now that are open.
Does that have one nuisance?
Public nuisance in the lot.
Yeah, we know why.
Vegetation.
That's all vegetation? And there's still twenty-two open on that?
So do you guys want this as a normal routine report, maybe? Orderly?
Yeah, I make my.
Okay.
Maybe we could just add, put.
Sure, yeah, we could do that.
Yeah. With a little chart.
Okay. Okay.
I like, I like your absolute chart.
Yeah?
Anywhere comments? Question? I mean, what happened in June, hundred and seventy-one?
That was, that was.
And that was probably letters went out in. Eight.
May, months ago.
So that was right about the, the deadline? Sure, come on in.
You can explain a little bit.
Is I noticed that, I noticed that. You've got, can't see that part. Three under, three, two, then you got the one seventy-one, four, and then you have nine under other. What would, that outshines the three, two, six, or four. I'm just curious what the other would be for nine that couldn't be. Is it, are there like nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, you know what I'm trying to say? I'm trying to group it, that they don't group.
Right, the three, two, six.
I mean, they're, see, so nine is others, so much compared to everything else but the one seventy-one.
Yeah.
We can be a little bit more discreet if you, on this regard or for future, I, I'm not sure what other means.
Just curious.
Yeah, cause each month has some others that weren't on in the other category.
For eight, two.
It, it's often multiple things, it's like there were three different types, so sometimes they'll stick it under other.
Cause there's a total of fifty-five, when you look at the totals, totals. Compared to the others, yeah, fifty-five is a lot.
Thank you for that. All right, moving on, we are going to do our administration report in eight. And, um. I don't know if we have Steve, we have Michelle, do you have anything to present?
I don't.
Rose?
No, the construction in the building is complete.
Okay.
We welcome Steve. So, um, some offices have changed from the last time maybe you guys were on there. We did, um, speak to Martin.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and he has framed pictures that he's going to lend to the city to hang on the new wall. Um, and we'll get some more details about what is, what, um, happened or occurred in the pictures. He gave me some history on the current ones, did we get quite a few questions? People wanna know what it was. So we're excited about decorating, so Rose and I will go over to the museum and look through their pictures and we're excited to.
Get some up.
Get some up.
Yeah. All right, great.
Thank you, Mary. I would just like to thank you once again to the council for trusting me with this opportunity and it's good to be in the community for the first time. I just wanna clarify that I will be, um. Checking on cooling centers tomorrow, to confirm that it will be at the library. I will confirm what hours, uh, a library will be open for the next few days.
Just for, not to interrupt you, but I said, Rose.
And that, that's the one I posted on my.
Right, so I've, um, at least for beat the heat twenty twenty-four cooling centers, cooling center will be open from Tuesday, July second. Through Sunday, July seventh, from ten AM to eight PM, unless otherwise specified. Copperopolis, Moke Hill, Angels Camp, Angels Camp Library at three, five, eight North Main Street, ten AM to four PM, Tuesday through Sunday. Um, for assistance of transportation, call Calaveras Connect Dial Ride, um, and the numbers that.
I would still check.
Right, I don't know, I can still, that's, yeah.
Yeah, when I, I don't know if this is, it says that the Angels Camp Library is ten AM to four PM.
Right.
So we'll be double checking with them.
Right, and we will want them to go until eight.
Four o'clock, it's open during the day.
Oh, no, I agree.
So I'll be confirming that with the library tomorrow, um, uh, talking with Amy about, um. Her presentation, great job, Amy, thank you very much. And hopefully I can get out and see some of the work that's gonna start tomorrow out there. And I will be checking on if we do in a year or two or three have to increase the GAN limit. Will that be accomplished through a general election or a special, special election? So I'm working on those three things in the morning.
He's already.
Right. I would like this, and I, I, I don't, well, I won't say, I wanna say that. With you on board now, Steve, and the direction, um, I'd like this, and I know we're, you have to be a part of the county sometimes and things like that, but. You know, I, I was thinking this morning when I came to visit your office and saw your new office, that, you know, where are the cooling centers? So we lost that resiliency grant, which would have provided us an opportunity, so I, I'd like to stay out in front of that. And maybe designate places way before we have to. You know, and except that's working, Jen can help you with contacts at public health or whatever, but I should like to stay ahead of that. If we could.
Same thing happened with the fire.
Yeah.
Mike and I were just talking about the, the fire a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
Kind of the, the, um, the evacuation center was typically it would be at school or the high school or this or that, so. Kinda get that mapped out and advances up.
That's what I'm saying, so that we know.
And there's a reason behind it every time, like Scott can probably speak to when pools in, in, when, when the facilities aren't available or such.
Right, cause that, that's a difference, but, um.
Sometimes it's the fairgrounds and sometimes it's not.
Mark, we know that you received a generator.
I think that's where.
Why it's a go-to, one must probably. But they did receive a generator.
Okay, okay.
And it's all confused, like when PSPS hit a couple of years ago, then PJB, uh, Utica provided the cooling center, so.
At their cost.
At their cost, so it's all, I don't know, it's all.
But I, yeah, you just stay ahead of that, because we have a lot, we have an overly population and.
Well, and that'll make it easier on you, so you're not getting five phone calls, so that you, we would all know, oh, this is a PSPS, so it's likely this, this direction or that direction. We might retain that.
Do you have that posted on your website once we clarify it?
Okay, I need to do that.
Center right now.
We did.
We, we put it on the Facebook.
We put it on Facebook.
Yeah, most people look at our Facebook rather than the website, so.
I do like the idea of a place that has a generator just because of the rolling black.
Exactly.
This shirt probably sounds stupid.
Mary, she's a lot of excitement.
Probably really stupid, but Mary, you mentioned, uh, overtime. You mentioned maybe doing overtime or whatever, and I, I have no idea if there's anything left in the building. But there is the old city hall where you could have a cool inside if you had people for, I mean, it gets really bad. Uh, you do have an empty building there and I don't know if they have anything hooked up or anything, but, um, just, just curious about it, cause you did spend years.
Overtime, thank you.
Stupid, I don't know.
Okay, and we're gonna move on to item nine, council report. Come on, I'm gonna start here.
I ended, uh, the UTICA meeting last Tuesday, um. We did discuss again the five-year joint power security funding agreement, um, and the legal.
Permit.
Permit, yeah, that was, that was created by the legal council for, um, Utica. And that is gonna come back to us and have to.
I think it'll be coming in July.
And then, um, we talked about the, the yellow legged frogs. Have to do a whole bunch of things for, for, if you wanna put a little bit about that, but, um. Just so that we can get the, the, um, work towards getting the, um, exemption, so there's just all these environmental things that are happening.
And this is the time that you have to do them, because you wanna get all the different water flows. So you wanna spring in the summer and a fall, um, for not nesting, but the egg laying and things like that, so they do need to do a more extensive. Evaluation of the protected species and the frogs, one of them.
Yep.
So we had to move forward with, uh, those costly, yeah, study.
Yeah, but that, that would be, it's regardless of.
We would have to do that either.
Either way.
Either way.
If that's sufficient wildlife, yeah, you're gonna have to do that study regardless of which route you go, yeah. We're still, um, teetering on if, if anything goes sideways on the FERC exemption strategy. We are still about ninety percent of our costs are recuperable to go a different direction with the relicensing.
All right, that's all right.
Oh, no, we had a fun little thing, so a team from Cal Poly, a team of students from Cal Poly manufactured, they designed and built a mini pelton wheel. For Ross Reservoir, is it for Ross? Because it has an older type of, it's not a pelton wheel, it's a different, it was a bubble thing, he called it. Anyways, so they are gonna be assembling that, and is Tori still online? Because, um, they're gonna install it out there and it's gonna be a neat little thing. For potentially the freshman to cover that. Yeah, they designed it, and it's a small version of the big giant pelton wheels, so it's gonna be functional at Ross Reservoir. And that should be happening probably July or August, like it might happen this month.
That was supposed to power something.
It is, yeah.
That like the skates or something.
Exactly, it's gonna be fully functional.
Yeah, it was a fully functional little.
And good for power, when it powered up and things like that, it's gonna.
Exactly, it was gonna power.
Generate.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so that was that. That's all I have too, um, and that's for me, that's my report as well, that's all I've attended in the last, uh, two weeks, is the Utica meeting. Isabel, you're right.
I attended the Utica meeting along with everyone else, um, and then otherwise like. Report, but I can't say I'm not going to be at the Rock Co meeting or our next meeting, so.
I guess you go to Rock Co. By a lot, or?
By yours.
Oh, okay, so I'm scratching you.
Yeah.
But I had it, I had it down and all.
You're still your cog.
I'm a cog. So I'm on for cog in August.
Yes.
Okay. I had nothing that moment left.
I don't have anything.
Perfect. Okay, let's look at the calendar.
First, me next, however, my June into live calendar are not in my folder, so I moved them somewhere and I'm thinking it got attached one of the meetings. So I will email it all out to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Sorry.
And I'll call you.
Okay, um, future agenda items.
I got one.
Okay.
Um, so during the power outage caused by the fire, from what I gather is we had to borrow a generator from the county. To keep lift station or water, wastewater operations kinda going. I thought at some point we had an agreement with Sutton or somebody to borrow a generator, um. I don't know, I just wanna, I wanna look into buying our own generator.
I, I agree, um, there was, I thought there was other communications in regards to, maybe it's the skaters, they have to do something else. Because of losing the power, but we can confirm with Chris.
Right, so it's good, I just wanna confirm with Chris on what we need and, you know, and then if Utica needs it for something, I would say.
I would, I agree.
I, I think we need to talk to some agencies and get, get a really good game plan together, um, cause.
Can we use enterprise funds for it?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, we could use enterprise funds for it, or maybe, I, I mean.
Chris had to add that to the list for budget modifications that we present later on after we finish with OAK.
So in case it's not available at the county or.
Just for clarification, I was involved with that with Chris, but unless there's something that I don't know about, uh, had a company bring one out that was rented. Calo ES was picking up the bill on that.
Maybe that was, or something, but.
I don't know about any other thing, but he and I were in contact with Calo ES. And we sent them the invoice for a rented generator that he had contact for, all set up for a specific forty-five kilowatt generator that he needed or whatever for the. Twenty-four hours or whatever.
Right.
Needed for, and that bill was sent back over to Calo ES and they're, they are putting that bill on that for the power outage due to their fire.
I, we still need to add it though.
Yeah, I, I know, I know we talked about it a long time ago.
About two years ago.
Yeah, but it was during PSPS, we.
So we had borrowed it from, uh, from the county back during PSPSs and then Chris, we identified during this power outage that Chris said, I need to get it back again. Which I didn't know it was a rented one, I thought it was theirs, but.
Yeah, or something, I don't know.
And I had said, oh, wouldn't it be nice to have one of ours?
Right, basically to get one.
Right, cause otherwise they have to hand.
Or two, or whatever, we basically look into it.
Perfect.
But you got it.
It's on the list.
It's on the list.
Any other, uh, future agenda items?
I have, and I don't, I don't know how we can do this, but I am aware that the fireworks are sold as a fundraiser to schools, but is there any way that moving forward, we can. Talk to the schools about doing it at a different time of year, um, just because every year we come up against the same thing, which is fires. And obviously we're too late in the game for this year, but it's just something that I'd like to maybe start the discussions. I don't know, like, I don't even know if that's a possibility of doing it at Christmas or New Year, it's not.
It's not.
So.
So we tried, we brought that up after the feud fire, we brought it up after, uh, a couple of years ago when we did the county white ban for a while.
Right.
It's all done by state fire marshal, they can only sell fireworks during the special window, but it had to go through the legislation to change that. We already tried to do, we wanted to do it at Christmas or.
So the only thing, John, you're saying the only thing we could do is another ban. For future, not right here.
Any ideas on stuff like that that we can talk about there, and I think there's a way to do something different.
So maybe that's what we do is get.
That would be great.
Your presentation on an agenda, not.
Yeah, I know.
Right away, but.
My, so where, we used to do stuff at school.
High school.
Right.
And we're.
Liability.
Right, and we're, the chief associator down in the whole, the whole county, we're working with, oh, yeah, already on this, cause they brought it, but like this, this year, but it's way too late, so what we're hoping to do is, you know, if we're gonna have fireworks, I think what we're gonna have is pre-designated, or try to do that in the county, maybe in the city, where multiple counties can go to one place, they can see everybody with fireworks and there'll be fire trucks there, there could be vendors there, stuff like that, so those are things that we're working on, but the school, as you guys have been there for a while, that was amazing, it was.
Yeah.
You take our part, we're still ready to do that.
So there's, there's just one booth though, right, the, the Mark Twain boosters? Is there one, is there one in Murphy's too, or I don't know that.
I'm looking up right now, there's one in.
Yeah, there's one.
Off of Murphy's, Santa Maria.
Yeah, oh, yeah, Santa Maria's too.
But there's not multiple in town, I think there's just the one.
There used to be like.
There used to be like two or three here.
Yeah.
There used to be the baseball, football, baseball, football, AMA soccer, there was, yeah, then it dwindled down.
Soccer.
And the high school, yeah.
It dwindled down just in baseball. Then I think the PTA, I think progress.
I know it's too late for now, but I'm more so just planning to see if this, we really need that, I think that'd be a consideration moving forward.
Any other future agenda items?
Okay, seeing then, we will now adjourn to close session. So thank you all for attending.